So, I'm just going to say, so this is, you work for, you do for, Fox Park, so, I was local and you were here. I live in, I live in the house that you're up in, and it's all on, so, yeah, it's good, you're still on the consultation. Well, I'm back. It's pretty funny.
Hi, Matt Palmer.
And I have one sister, two, like, daughters, two sons, so it's.
What about you?
Exactly, I'm living in the same place, there's no saying about rooms that are my sister and I. Yeah, if you're gonna ask me, that's cool, that's what I'm, so. I hear that. If you come back, if you come next year, it's pretty, pretty risky. Yeah. Don't worry, it's supposed to be very, very, so I may run it for a couple of hours, or a half hour. There's some late nights from time to time, just a little trouble. Oh, yeah, yeah. Ah, yeah, it's, it's one day. Yeah. 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 This is, yeah.
This is a lawsuit, commercial or presidential?
Right.
I'm bringing the, I'm bringing the, sorry.
You know about them?
Oh, hey, guys.
Anybody here?
Yeah.
We emailed yesterday, saying that we just created a.
He just gets the present right out of there.
That's true.
I think, uh, I think it's a, it's a, it's a, we're waiting.
Oh, now you're watching on the.
What about your shirt?
If you hear a conference event, you can watch.
You know, I know.
Sure.
Here he comes. Just, yeah, he'd be a nice question.
Yeah. Yay. Good evening and welcome to the Webster's only more appeals meeting for July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. This evening, we have seven items on the agenda. Here, if you might have to go on, you. I'm not sure about here. Uh, so, seven items on the agenda this evening, uh, we do have public legal publication for each of this evening's matters. And one administrative matter, if you could call it all.
Mr. Newtown.
Here.
Mr. Barone.
Here.
Mr. Stafford.
Here.
Mrs. Mola, here. Mr. Hauser.
Here.
Mr. DeMarco.
Here.
Mr. Artuso.
Here.
Okay, we do have a full, uh, board this evening, if you could rise to the point of leaving.
A flight of agents is filed in the line of the United States of America, to the Republic of Russia's claims, and one nation, one God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Uh, the, uh, first item on the agenda is fourteen thirty-seven, Ryder Field Way.
Fourteen thirty-seven Ryder Field Way garage addition, located at fourteen thirty-seven Ryder Field Way. Evocent Richard Lee and Horst is requesting an area variance to allow a five-foot east side setback. Where fifteen feet is required, associated with the construction of a third garage bay addition to a single-family residence on a point zero five five acre parcel. Having SPL number zero five zero point zero four dash four dash thirty, located in an R three single-family residential district under section two two five dash eleven of the code of the town of Webster.
Is the applicant here?
He's the one who said the post.
Oh, there he goes. Good to see ya, if you could state your name and address and describe your.
Sure, Richard Vanderhorst, fourteen thirty-seven Ryder Field Way, Webster, New York, one four five eight oh. Uh, my goal is to add a, uh, coastal garage to the left of the existing home. Uh, then additionally add some space in behind the existing garage and that new garage addition, to make it a little deeper towards the back of my lot. And then to use space above that, uh, for additional storage for future living space.
Uh, question, you said a twelve-foot extension in your letter in the time, but it says you plan to extend fifteen feet of current garage space. So it's gonna be twelve?
It's twelve, both for addition. It says fifteen?
If I'm reading it correctly, it says it is also part of the plan to extend fifteen feet of current garage space? Yeah, so the current. Ten foot deeper.
The current garage is twenty feet wide. Fifteen of that twenty will go eight feet deeper, it's not eight feet, not ten feet, but it'll go eight feet deeper. Fifteen feet of the current garage will go eight feet deeper, overall we're going twelve feet off the. Set that stuff. Sorry for that.
Is this a single-story?
Currently the garage is a single-story, when it's done, it will be a two-story with roof in front, then housing unit. There'll be a door around the front.
You've got substantial grade change, uh, on that side where you're proposing to extend the garage.
Twenty-two inches, yeah.
Are you, have you came along or just wanted to keep it as is and just basically, uh, introduce your addition into the existing grade?
So the addition of going to the existing grade, I'll bring the block up obviously a little bit higher and then landscape that block. And then where the driveway starts, I'll be using large folder stone to decorate the side of that garage driveway, so that it'll blend into the existing driveway. I'll probably use some kind of shadow stone as well on the side of that, so then it looks more decorative.
I see a letter of support from the neighbor, fourteen thirty-seven Stephen Wright, is that?
Two right to my east, correct.
With the, with the private garage?
Well, I'm fourteen.
Now, that's Martin, that's across the street.
That's across the street, yeah.
Across the street.
Last name Monahan?
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is, the neighbor that affects the most is the one immediately adjacent.
Yeah, there should be a letter in there as well for that.
So we have two, two letters, one at fourteen forty-four Ryder Field Way, and one at fourteen forty-one Ryder Field Way.
Correct.
One from Martin Keen Peasy, at fourteen forty-one, and the, uh, Michael Monahan at fourteen forty-four.
That's correct, yeah.
Fourteen forty-one is the house with the driveway that we identified with us.
Yeah.
No, intent, are there intentions to remove any of the greenery on that side that borders the, uh, driveway?
No, I don't think so.
You'll be able to do that?
Yeah, should be fine. Maybe trim it up a little bit instead of the property line a bit, but. Then they're wired up.
This meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application, if you could step up to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Hi, Christian Keen Peasy, I live at fourteen thirty-one Ryder Field Way. I'm not opposed to him doing this, his extension and everything, because they're great homeowners and they take great care of their property. My concern is my property where my driveway is, I have arborvitae bushes that we've had there since the day we moved in, which was many, many years ago. And they are humongous, they're higher than your ceilings, and I'm a little concerned about the construction. Um, I'm glad, I found out that it's not gonna be by foot up of the property line, it's now gonna be twelve feet, which makes me much happier, um.
All right, well, twenty feet, you're correct.
And that twelve feet.
Twelve-foot extension.
So it would be five feet off the property line.
Right.
But not five feet off the driveway.
It's, it's, it's twelve, twelve feet off the driveway or something like that, it's.
Yeah, there's, there's more distance between the property line and the driveway.
Right, right, yeah, it's farther from the trees and stuff than what I thought, from where the trees are.
I, I didn't, I don't know what you thought, um.
Mark and I looked at it today, it's farther back towards your property, so, yeah, so it's better.
So your original thought, okay?
Yeah, yeah, so I'm good with that.
Okay.
But my concern is that when they go to do the destruction, and they start digging for the foundation or whatever, I'm just concerned about the trees.
You're talking about the arborvitae that are gonna go, that are going to parallel the addition.
They're right there on my property, along my driveway.
What he says, he's gonna keep, he, he, one, it sounds like they're on your property, so you can't remove them. Two, what's extending into his property, he's gonna trim back.
Well, I don't hear they took, they took them back, my concern is that the roots get ruined, or they get injured, and that the trees die. That's my concern. That's my only concern. Other than that, I'm fine with everything, but everybody's had shallow root systems, and that's my only concern, is that the trees might get injured. Other than that, I'm all good.
Okay.
Okay, it's just that they're very, very large trees, so, other than that, I'm all good.
Perfect.
Okay?
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this application? Seeing no one, we'll return the discussion back to the board, pursuant to MYCRR, section six seventeen of the environmental code, I'll make a motion for type two seeker, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Well, uh, in order to achieve a third bay, uh, which is certainly not uncommon these days, uh, the applicant has one choice, which is to go off of the existing two-car garage. I think everything makes sense to me in terms of what he's proposing, it's a, a twelve-foot garage addition, which is not out of character by any means in terms of a, a single bay.
You know, the original garage in twelve by twenty is kind of, the twenty by twenty, I think that's a small garage, so he needs this, he needs.
So I think the, you heard the concern, um, apparently the, uh.
She did?
She did.
Yes.
Stated her case and got out of here, so it's too nice outside, I don't want to be here. Perfect. Uh, so I think the, uh, the concern is, uh, obviously that she wants to protect those arborvitae, uh, that it sounds like she has an issue to turn them back, but.
So I've been turning, trimming them for years now, so, otherwise they just, you know, so.
We, we've done, I mean, that business, but a lot of times we'll put up a construction fence right around anything that needs to be saved, protect, protect our arborvitae. If you're outside the drip line, you're probably out of the most, it's just, kind of, courtesy, you know, to the neighbor.
Absolutely, yeah. To be honest with you, I don't want to ruin either, because it's all I see, the whole east side of my yard, the whole south side of my yard is just thirty-foot over, like.
It's a mutual advantage, keep those healthy.
Yes. The bushes that do neighbors.
I thought it was six-foot high fences, maybe, right, Charlie?
Whatever, I don't know.
Okay.
Any, any further comments, questions, no?
There's a lot of houses in the neighborhood that have either a third garage, either have a third garage, and it's not a valid one, kind of. Today, everybody's got two cars involved, or sitting in their space.
Anyone care to, uh, run through the standards? Sorry.
Oh, um, as, as Corinne stated, I think we just, uh, granted the variance and stayed there, but last meeting, part lot. And you need a fence and something, you need to get closer to the lot line than, you know, than the code allowed. Uh, the gentleman doesn't really have any other direction going for, to the car garage. Uh, twelve feet is not excessive, so he's not adding more space than he really needs to establish another car garage. Uh, we heard from the immediate neighbor, and she seems to be perfectly happy with the addition, as long as the gentleman protects our arborvitae trees, and I think he's, can believe that. There is no detriment to nearby properties, because the immediate neighbor is the only neighbor that this really affects. The benefit's really not achievable in any other way, because, as I said, twelve feet is a minimal one-car garage that he's adding. The variance is somewhat substantial, and that fifteen feet required is going to five feet, but there again, it's kind of confined, you know, by the, uh, you know, by the kitchen, the house on the lot. Here again, there's another house, if the builder moved about fifteen, twenty feet to the west, this, we wouldn't be here talking about this, but it's just, just aware of this.
I'm sorry, if I had a house directly to my east, that I thought would be, not willing to come in and ask for this, but there's just open line there.
Difficulty not really self-created, it's just, uh, as, as I said, in the way the house was sighted, not an undesirable change, it'll actually, um, you know, with three-car garage, it's nice, it keeps, keeps cars and all miscellaneous lawn equipment and so on out of sight, keeps things neat, so, uh. So, let's see, I'll make a motion to grant a very, uh, area variance. For garage addition located in fourteen thirty-seven Ryder Field Way. Richard Vanderhorst is the owner, requesting a variance to allow five-foot east side setback with fifteen feet is required, associated with construction of a three-car garage bay addition to a single-family residence on point five five acre parcel having SPL number zero five zero point zero four dash four dash thirty. Located in an R three single-tenth residential district under section two twenty-five dash eleven of the code of the town of Webster. And I really can't make you do this, but we would sure appreciate if you put a fence up to protect that home and those arborvitae, so, this, she favored your application in that one condition, so, I'm sure, sure they have. And, you know, make sure that, I mean, if you're gonna hire a contractor, probably talk to contractor by the time, make them aware of the, uh, importance of that.
Okay, we'll do that.
Senator? Mr. Barone?
Aye.
Mrs. Volo?
Aye.
Mr. Stafford?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Newtown?
Okay, you've got your variance, couple conditions apply, must obtain unnecessary governmental permits, including a town building permit, and one-year making-of-construction, set to expire one year from tonight.
Thank you very much, appreciate all your time.
All right, next, uh, up is ten twenty-four Shoemaker Road?
Ten twenty-four Shoemaker Road Garage, located at ten twenty-four Shoemaker Road. Applicant David Bobenzey is requesting an area variance to allow a thirty-five-foot north rear setback, where fifty-five feet is required, associated with the demolition of an existing four hundred and seventy-five square foot accessory structure. And construction of a new nine hundred and sixty square foot accessory structure on a one-point-two acre parcel having SPL number zero six four point zero two dash one dash fifteen point one. Located in an R two single-family residential district under section two two five dash ten of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you state your name, address, and describe your request?
Uh, David Bobenzey, ten twenty-four Shoemaker Road, Webster, uh, requesting to tear down my existing detached garage and build a larger structure.
And the footprint, for the most part, is within the existing, or it's gonna cover the existing footprint?
Yeah, extending north four feet, south three feet, and ten feet to the east.
I believe in your application sticker that it's gonna match the, uh, character of the existing structure.
It'll actually look, I have an old farmhouse, the house was built in eighteen sixty-eight, so this will actually look like a barn, it's a gable roof, so I think it'll match the, the current garage, just to match the, the house right.
Is there any intention to match up? No, I guess I was thinking of just how.
Connecting it?
Yeah, did, did you consider connecting it to the existing structure?
To my home?
Yeah.
Uh, it's too far away, it's setback probably thirty feet to my house.
Yeah, no, I'm not moving it up to connect to it.
No, it would, it would take away all the parking I have in my driveway, I have a whole parking section to the left of my driveway.
I'm just curious, it's a very minor point, but it looks like you did move the back a couple feet, the garage, a deck, a couple feet.
Yeah, correct, four feet to the back. The driveway, if I moved it too far forward, it would, there's an open area to my garage, my driveway, it would move too far forward into that area, so that's why I'm only going through back door.
So the practical reason of that?
And it has to be in that spot, because my pool area is to the west of that, so that's why I don't.
When I visited the property, I had wondered why he wouldn't put it, I'll say at the end of the turnaround in front of the pool, except that there would still be a variance required for the repeated there, so it really doesn't, it really doesn't change, change any variance.
And I think.
And it's more noise.
And being further back, obviously there's nothing behind me, it's farmland, Webster Park, so, I mean, going back is, yeah, it's, and then moving it west, or east, I'm sorry, is actually further behind my house, so it's actually more hidden.
If I'm not mistaken, that land behind me is, you know, the open space program, so, we back.
I know it was.
The town, uh, took the development first, so, I was trying to buy it, it's gone. The, yeah, it's, um, it's gonna stay pretty much open space, so there's really no need where that's ever going to be.
Over down instead, on, on the older beginning, I think, kind of, besides farmland.
Exactly.
All right, uh, any other questions, comments?
Do you have any objections to the condition that, that the area is not used for living space, or?
Absolutely not, absolutely.
Very good.
This meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application? Okay. Return the discussion back to the board, pursuant to NYCRR, section six seventeen of the environmental code, I'll make a motion for type two seeker.
Sir?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I think we've covered many of the, uh, standards. Essentially, it's, it's a replacement of, of what's there, just a, a larger scale, um, you know, constructed to, uh, to blend in with the character of the existing house that was built in the eighteen hundreds. Uh, trying to accomplish alignment with the pool area and minimize impact to the driveway. As was noted, uh, there's nothing, uh, to the north between open space and the town, the town, and beyond that, the town, like, grid, uh, to the north. In terms of, uh, character, and, you know, this is out of character in the neighborhood, no environmental impacts, slightly self-created, but, uh, once again, there was an existing, or is an existing, structure that, pretty much trying to stay within that footprint. Uh, Mr. Hauser pointed out, the applicant stated that, uh, he is not going to use this as an accessory dwelling, uh, so there'll be no living spaces, uh, purely stored, or, correct. Anything to add? That being said, I'll make a motion to grant an area variance at ten twenty-four Shoemaker Road for the applicant Dave Bobenzey. Who is seeking an area variance to allow a thirty-five-foot north rear setback where fifty-five feet is required, associated with the demolition of an existing four hundred and seventy-five square foot accessory structure and condition, construction of a new nine hundred and sixty square foot accessory structure on a one-point-two acre parcel having SPL number zero six four dot two, uh, dot zero two dash one dash fifteen dot one. Located in an R two single-family residential district under section two twenty-five dash ten of the code of the town of Webster.
Sir?
Aye.
All in favor? All right, not all in favor, all right, we'll take, we'll, uh.
Fourth, fifth side.
Mr. Newtown?
Aye.
Mr. Barone?
Aye.
Mrs. Volo?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Stafford?
Aye.
Okay, uh, you've got your variance, couple conditions apply, must obtain all necessary governmental permits, including a town building permit, and one-year making-of-construction, set to expire one year from today.
Thank you.
Next. Next up is thirteen forty-five Cherry Laurel Circle.
Thirteen forty-five Cherry Laurel Circle, correct, I'm sorry, Gable Earth Extension, located at thirteen forty-five Cherry Laurel Circle. Applicant Matt Palmer is requesting an area variance to allow a thirty-four-foot south rear setback where fifty feet is required, associated with the extension of the Gable Earth to create a covered patio on a point four five acre parcel having SPL number zero six five point zero three dash two dash five eight. Located in an R three single-family residential district under section two two five dash eleven of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening. How are you? Uh, my name's Matt Palmer, I live at thirteen forty-five Cherry Laurel Circle, I'm looking to get a variance for my gable, I want to extend the gable over my patio currently. Uh, I believe there's, it's gonna encroach, I think, almost a thirty-four feet or less, just gonna match up the existing structure that's there.
And there is a drainage easement, but you're well outside of the drainage easement. And your backyard is a softball park.
Correct. Yeah, we back up there, rec center.
It's gonna be open on all sides?
Yes.
Why did we need for such a long structure?
We just recently put in a patio that's approximately six hundred square. I just wanna cover a part of it. Yeah, the shaded area will be approximately two hundred square feet. My math is correct.
So the patio also extends back to the east?
And you just stretch it?
Yeah.
What's that, I'm sorry?
You're not covering the whole patio, just.
That is correct, yeah, it's just, it's basically coming out of the existing gable and going out approximately, I believe on the permit it said twenty feet, it's gonna be closer to seventeen feet.
When you, when you look at the way the gable on the back of the house, that's an easy extension on that road, so it makes sense, makes sense to do that.
Yeah, on similar. We have one a similar size, disconnected though, over off of, uh, Van Halsein, remember that? It was a very wooded side.
I think a wild valley.
Yes, wild.
The houseway at the end.
That one was a little larger, that one was bigger than this, but same thing.
A little larger, but very similar, yeah.
Same.
And it makes sense, I mean, it's, to not go to depth of the patio, and then you have to put holes in the patio and damage the structure of it, or who put the footers in? It, it just, it makes sense to just go to the edge of the patio and see if the footers just offload it. It's really an accessing sized, at least in the.
I, I think one of the key factors here also is, rec center isn't a bad guarantee, I mean, there's people playing back there, it's not like a, it's not like a private residential type of neighborhood to, you know, it's, I'll, I'll bet that's a pretty, uh, pretty noisy space.
I'll consider, yeah, considering the lights are on until eleven, eleven-thirty at night. I'll consider, yeah, considering the lights are on until eleven, eleven-thirty at night, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's, so, my point being, this extension doesn't affect any neighbors, it's, it's a playground, basically.
I think there are handful of pools too that are much closer to the, uh, obviously they can be, but my point is somewhat closer in that setback area.
Yes.
This meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application? Return the discussion back to the board. Pursuant to NYCRR Section six seventeen of the environmental code, I'll make a motion for type two secrets. All in favor? Aye. Any other comments, questions? Okay. We've touched on a lot of the, um, standards already. Uh, this backs off to the, uh, rec center and softball fields. The applicant is not going to, uh, enter the, uh, the drainage easement, that's on the parcel, looking for a thirty-four foot, uh, rear setback. As was noted, there are other constructed objects, uh, closer to the, uh, rear lot lines in the development, uh, especially to the, to the west, I believe there are a handful of pools. Uh, you're gonna leave this open, correct?
Yes.
It will not be enclosed? You're fine with the condition, condition that it would be?
Left open.
Left open.
Yes.
Yes. Am I missing anything?
It's an incredibly shallow area, there's visual that could be done that would not require a variance.
Well, that's why I asked on the size. You know, it's not bad, I mean, but anyway.
Just, and there's just a beautiful view.
There's a walking path that's right behind it, that's actually in the town property of it.
Okay, I think we've covered the standard standards, uh, I'll be able to tell you anything else. Um, I'll make a motion to grant an area variance to thirteen forty-five Cherry Laurel Circle for a gable roof extension. The applicant, Matt Palmer, uh, requesting, uh, a thirty-four foot south or rear setback where fifty feet is required, associated with the extension of the gable roof, create a covered patio on a point four five acre parcel having SPL number zero sixty-five dot zero three dash two dash fifty-eight, located in an R three single-family residential district under Section two twenty-five dash eleven of the code of the town of Webster, with one condition to be added, that the, uh, structure will not be enclosed. Second.
Mr. Newtown?
Aye.
Mr. Hausen?
Aye.
Mr. Stafford?
Aye.
Mrs. Volo?
Aye.
Mr. Barone?
Aye.
Okay, you've got your variance, couple of conditions apply, uh, must obtain all necessary governmental permits, including a town building permit, and one year of main construction, and the setback expires one year from this evening, plus a special condition that you will not, it won't be enclosed. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. See you. Next up, seven zero one Hillspring Terrace.
Seven zero one Hillspring Terrace, perdo, located at seven zero one Hillspring Terrace. Applicant Alan Lango is requesting an area variance to allow a seventeen foot south rear setback where fifty feet is required, associated with construction of a fourteen by fourteen foot perdo on a point four one acre parcel having SPL number zero seven nine point zero five dash three dash eight nine, located in an R three single-family residential district under Section two two five dash eleven of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening.
Good evening, Alan Lango, this is my husband Douglas Lango, seven oh one Hillspring Terrace. And we're applying for a variance to build the perdo.
Okay. And you've provided a sketch of what this, uh, is gonna look like, the package. Typical perdo off four corner posts and then a, uh, open style top, correct?
Correct.
No plans to enclose it?
No.
Left open, seating area with a patio under it?
Yes.
This is a, uh, obviously locked, corner locked here, not a lot of space in the backyard. One thing that I noted is that this is actually less than square foot than a shed, and I'm recalling it an accessory structure, correct?
You see, it actually is less impacted than a shed.
That was my point, yeah. And less impact than what we think of as a traditional accessory structure being a perdo.
Exactly. Now, the house itself, I think we granted a, uh, area variance for the construction of the house because the setback of the house is at thirty-eight point seven feet. So even the house is at thirty-five foot, there could be a setback for, that we would need for the perdo, or for the perdo level.
Yeah, it's been very, very small backyard, no question.
Just what type of faces the front lawn?
Right. My only question was, did you consider moving it to the east now, just so that it wouldn't, it increase the rear setback a little bit? I know there's a, um, drainage easement to the rear, we need to, we shouldn't just stay out of.
It comes right off the, uh, covered patio, the steps are right there, so you can come off the patio down the steps.
Okay.
Oh, it's still perdo.
And then it's gonna connect right to those steps then?
No, it's gonna be setback, but it's in line with the, with the.
Okay, the covered deck, that makes sense.
Still have a walkway from the covered.
Yeah. Okay. And you don't wanna connect it to the covered deck, it'd run the space.
This meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application? Okay. So we'll return the discussion back to the board. Pursuant to NYCRR Section six seventeen of the environmental code, I'll make a motion for type two secret, second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Sorry, I forgot. Anyone care to walk through the standards?
Yeah, I will. Perdo will, it's more open than a shed, a shed would shut it a bit in the backyard. It fits the, 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 because it is a corner lot. Somewhat a small corner lot, besides, so it's gonna be, uh, no matter what it does, it'd be, uh, the variance. Really not affecting the character of the neighborhood. Perdo is, uh, might be a, a nice feature in the backyard. I love sitting on the deck, so it's just, might not take in that. I'll make a motion to, yeah, petition as opposed.
Second. Mr. Hausen?
Aye.
Mrs. Volo?
Aye.
Mr. Stafford?
Aye.
Mr. Barone?
Aye.
Mr. Newtown?
Aye. Okay, uh, you've got your, uh, area variance, two conditions apply, must obtain all governmental permits, including the town building permit, and, do you know how long you have? There you go. All right, have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, fifteen eighty-two Lake Road Garage condition.
Fifteen eighty-two Lake Road Garage, located at fifteen eighty-two Lake Road. Applicant Kevin Goodwine is requesting an area variance to allow an accessory structure to be placed closer to the front property line than the rear line of the main residence, which is not permitted, associated with the construction of a thirty-two by forty foot accessory structure on a four point four four acre parcel having SPL number zero three six point zero four dash one dash nine point one, located in an LL large lot, single-family residential district, under Section two two five dash thirty-six of the code of the town of Webster.
Hi, my name's Kevin Goodwine, I reside at fifteen eighty-two Lake Road. And I'm constructed garage, detached garage, on the north, actually, in South Property Line, fifteen eighty-two Lake Road.
Looks like you already dug out for the, uh, stone base in driveway.
Uh, there was an existing basketball hoop that was there. That, um, uh, when we were doing the wall work, got destroyed, so when we removed the, uh, the wall materials, uh, when we did the shoreline erosion protection project, we just removed that at the same time, so it's just basically, it's in the same footprint. And I staked it out so that if somebody wanted to take a look at it, get an idea of where it would be.
There's probably been fifteen to twenty of these over the years. Size is consistent, setback's consistent, location's consistent.
Typical, you know, lakefront property, the backyard's a front yard, the front yard's a backyard, it's a picture time flip as far as.
It's a lot of specific.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Off the edge of the driveway, it's, it's not gonna be in line with the neighbor next door, so it's not gonna be at his neighborhood. He still has a lovely view of the lake, which would be inventive or put where the code says it's supposed to be.
So be a single story garage?
Uh, yes.
Do you have any, uh, objections to the pre-conditions, uh, structure that is not to be used for living space or, or commercial purposes?
No, we don't. Okay, uh, this meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application? Seeing nobody will return the discussion back to the board. And I don't think we have a lot of questions or comments because we dealt with, as I said earlier, at least fifteen to twenty of them along Lake Road over the past handful of years that are consistent with your application, so.
Yeah, it's pretty consistent with the neighborhood, yeah.
Uh, so, as was stated, this is, uh, in character with the, uh, the lake side of, uh, Lake Road. Size is consistent, uh, character of the neighborhood. I don't see any, uh, environmental impacts or detriments to allowing nearby properties. Yes, it's self, self, self-created. Um, however, as Mr. Barone pointed out, um, everything's reversed on the lake. You would not want this, uh, between your house and the lake views or any of the other residents, uh, in the vicinity. Anything else to add? I'll make a motion to grant an area variance at fifteen eighty-two Lake Road for the, uh, construction of a thirty-two by forty accessory structure on a four point four acre, oh, uh, I'm sorry. Three and two secret. Uh, pursuant to NYCRR Section six seventeen of the environmental code, I'll make a motion for type two secret.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Sorry about that. Once again, um, I'll make a motion to grant an area variance for a thirty-two by forty foot accessory structure at fifteen eighty-two Lake Road, uh, for the applicant Kevin Goodwine, uh, which is, uh, to allow an accessory structure to be placed closer to the front property line than the rear line of the main residence, which is not permitted. On parcel SPL number zero thirty-six dot zero four dash one dash nine dot one, located in a large lot, single-family residential district, under the Section two twenty-five thirty-six of the code of the town of Webster.
Second.
Mr. Newtown?
Aye.
Mr. Barone?
Aye.
Mrs. Volo?
Aye.
Mr. Hausen?
Aye.
Mr. Stafford?
Aye.
Okay, uh, your variance has been approved, couple of conditions apply, must obtain all necessary governmental permits, including a town building permit, and one year of main construction, and the setback expires one year from this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Next up, six eighty-five Ebner Drive.
Six eighty-five Ebner Drive Fence, located at six eighty-five Ebner Drive. Applicant, applicant Alan Parr on behalf of One School Global is requesting an area variance to allow a six foot tile fencing with gates with a front setback, which is not permitted, associated with the installation of approximately ninety millimeter feet of six foot tile decorative security fence with gates to control access to the school grounds on a three point five nine acre parcel having SPL number zero eight zero point one three dash two dash seventeen point one one three, located in an R three single-family residential district, under Section two two five dash seventy-seven of the code of the town of Webster.
Yeah, my name is Alan Parr, I represent One School Global at nine eighty-one Ebner Drive. We just, uh, we're doing over the summer, a bunch of security upgrades. View of all the recent, uh, activity and, and obviously, and, and, uh, these horrible acts with school shootings and that. We're trying to keep our, keep, keep our children safe as our, as our top priority, that is, that is, uh, what we're trying to do is trying to keep the, um, keep the school grounds closed off, um, all the time and just have access control to get in and out of the gates. And, um, we're requesting six foot high fence.
So it's only the pink section that, uh, was identified on the, the drawing that was provided, right?
Yeah, that's correct, it's, it's already got a fence, the fence is currently four foot high, but, but the gates are not motorized.
Are you going to increase the height of the fence all the way around the property or just?
Not at this point, no.
It appears to be a five foot fence on the property, no?
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
The fence is gonna have the same look as the existing fence.
Exactly, yeah.
Taller.
I put a picture of it in there.
Is there any intentions in future to extend the height of the existing fence?
Not at this point, no.
Reason I say that is that I want a stretch precedent. For, for the height. For the rest of the.
More setbacks allowed, you see?
No, the property line.
Not in the front. Not in the front, but the rear is all on that.
Well, the, my understanding is, if I'm reading this correctly, there's fences all around the existing property. There's still, yeah.
Right.
And that's more than half. No, the present time, the code requires a separate first. But, and that's the reason I asked the question. Yeah, the ten foot setback or six foot fence was made back in, in May. So six foot fences are allowed right on the property, just not in the front yard. Would, can you describe, record what, what the school is?
It's a private school, which, uh, we have community-based, um, all of our children from our community go and attend there. It's all, takes in all grades from third grade all the way up into, uh, up into twelfth grade. And, uh, we just have, um, teachers that come in and, and accredited teachers and teach our school, teach our students. And, uh, they were part of a large school system that is global, so they will, um, get on virtually with campuses all across the United States, all the way out to, uh, San Francisco and, and. All the way out to uh, San Francisco and Los Angeles and, and right, and through Canada as well. There's Australia and New Zealand and Caribbean. Ever, they all get together and they learn together so that they can get into classes with their best strengths. And uh, with people that are, um, that have the, have the same, the same strengths from other communities.
How many students in that school?
In, in Webster, we, we have uh, about forty-five.
And that's through a traditional or conventional school year?
Yeah.
And what are the hours?
We start at, uh, they start at eight and they go to three.
Because the gate can be controlled then, in some way?
Yeah, it's gonna have uh, electricity out there and an access control on the phones. And then the parents will have um, access to put their phone up to the gate and handle it.
The gates are closed unless someone?
Yeah.
Has um, an ability to access.
Except.
Someone to a gated community, to a residential state. Sadly, this fence is coming to.
This meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application. So if you will return the discussion back to the board. Pursuant to MYCRR section six seventeen in the environmental code, I'll make a motion for type two C.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the applicant is proposing, sorry, once again. Thank you. Uh, the applicant is proposing a nine foot section of fence that is self. Uh, that would prevent access unless you are badged or have the right code to enter. I'm assuming the pickup, pickup and drop-up zone uh, for the students, which we have one of those about forty-five in the uh, school.
Well, one of the things I like about this is that you can see right through the fence. The fence is black, so it almost is invisible to look at. You know, the nicer that chain link. It's not a stoppage of fence, it's not something that's going to block you. So it's almost like you could see right through it, so you can still see the school. It has, it's not a privacy fence, it's strictly for security.
So, you know, I'll just make the call, the, the comment. Uh, you know, the variance is, it's granted that this is a very unique situation. Uh, we're dealing with uh, schoolchildren preventing uh, access to that, to that area. Once again, every application stands, uh, you know, is evaluated independently. And uh, if we allow this six foot tall fence with gates and a front setback, it has various purposes for this. Anybody have any other comments or questions?
I did, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Um, there's, there's already a fence there. This is, this is a unique neighborhood, by the way. You have the fireman's field there, you know, you have uh, you know, uh, store to the north, furniture store. Uh, there's athletic fields all the way around it. Uh, it's kind of tucked away, and it's not visible from each road. So it's kind of a unique parcel to begin with. And um, as I said, the look that they're, they're going to achieve is very similar to what's there now. It's going to be a taller fence, of course, uh, six feet. But the being a black steel picket fence, it's, it's virtually almost invisible. Uh, the school is still visible, it doesn't block any, you know, sight, sight lines or anything. I understand their desire to uh, create security of the facility. Of course, the rest of the parcel has a five foot chain link fence around the entire piece, so this would complete. Because this is really the only access point close to the road, so this would complete that security at the desire. I don't see any negatives to the neighborhood. I think actually the council will advise it. That, again, this is a unique area. Uh, there's no, it's not really resident, I think there's one home that's kind of diagonally across the street on, on the drive. But beyond that, there's no residences that are going to have a view of that fence. Um, I don't see any negatives to it. There's no adverse detriments to, you know, created to nearby properties. The request is not substantial, we're making an existing fence taller. And there's no environmental impacts to the sire ever, to that matter. Difficulty is not self-created really, I think uh, prudent to take these precautions. And uh, you can't really, you can't really blame people for trying to protect themselves and their children. Uh, anybody have anything else that? So with that, I'd like to make a motion to grant an area variance. Um, applicant Alan Parr on behalf of One School Global. To allow a six foot tall fence with gates in the front setback. Which is not permitted associated with the installation of approximately ninety linear feet of six foot tall decorative security fencing with gates to control access into the school grounds on a three point five nine acre parcel. Having SBL number zero zero point one three dash two dash seventeen point one one three. Located in an R three single family residential district under section two twenty-five dash seventy-seven. The code of the town Webster. The only, the only condition I put in is that the fence is going to look like the, the, the application is going to be a steel picket fence that you can see through. Painted black.
Correct.
Yes. Anybody?
My, I don't know.
Most of it.
Second. Does anybody stand?
What, did you?
Sure.
Mr. Barone?
I guess it was.
Aye.
Why cut you in?
I was second.
Mr. Newtown?
Aye.
Mrs. Bolo?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Stafford.
Aye.
Okay, uh, you've got your variance. Two conditions apply, must obtain necessary permits and one year to construct it. Okay?
Thank you.
Uh, nine oh eight nine ten Clem Road.
Nine oh eight nine ten Clem Road rebuild. Located at nine oh eight nine ten Clem Road. Applicant Daniel Brennan on behalf of Greg Beachner. Is requesting permission to reconstruct a pre-existing non-conforming residence damaged by fire on the five point one two acre parcel. Having SBL number zero six four point one four dash two dash nine point one two one. Located in an R two single family residential district under section two two five dash one hundred of the code of the town Webster.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Daniel Brennan. I'm, I'm here on behalf of the applicant Gregory Beachner, uh, from the law firm Davidson Fink. Um, we're seeking tonight, uh, a determination from this board under code section two two five dash one hundred. That a legal pre-existing non-conforming use be allowed to continue on the site at nine oh eight uh, dash nine ten Clem Road. This application is, is probably a little bit different from applications uh, that this board is, is used to considering. I know it's different from the, the numerous applications that, that we've heard tonight. Um, we've provided the board with the area variance standards. Um, I hope that those are helpful in, in considering our application. But I don't think that they're necessary in considering our application. We're not seeking an area variance because there's a provision of the code, uh, section two two five dash one hundred. Which allows the board to approve, um, the re-establishment of a, of a legal pre-existing non-conforming use after more than six months. So the code generally allows, um, a, a legal pre-existing non-conforming use to continue. Um, after it's been discontinued for a period of up to six months. Here, uh, the, the legal pre-existing non-conforming use has been discontinued for longer than six months. And so we're asking the board for the, for approval to allow that. Um, we've provided a bit of background on this application in our letter of intent, as well as in, um, some of the other application documents. But um, I'll just go through it briefly and uh, Mr. Beachner is here as, as well to answer any questions that you might have about the property or, or what's happened. Um, so this, this property is, is, is known as the Marsh or Lazar Farm, um, located on Clem Road. The farm has been in operation since nineteen, at least nineteen twenty-eight, uh, probably longer than that. The original residence, um, was constructed in nineteen twenty-eight. Uh, after that, another residence on the property was constructed. Um, some other buildings, sheds and garages have been constructed since. But since nineteen twenty-eight, um, this original residence has, has been on the property. It's been used, uh, as a residence and it's never been discontinued. Um, and in addition, the farm has been, has been in operation, um, since that time as well. Uh, in November of twenty twenty, um, there was a, a tragic fire on the property. It started, um, in the original residence. Um, it has not completely destroyed the structure, um, but it, it has, it, the, the interior of the home needs to be substantially or completely replaced. Um, and as a result, at this time, it's, it's not livable. Um, and we will need to do significant rehabilitation of the property in order to recontinue its use. The second residence on the property, um, which I believe was built in approximately the, you think sometime around the nineteen forties. It's, it's still occupied, it's been occupied ever since it was built in the nineteen forties. Um, that was not affected by the fire. Um, but the, the original residence was. After, after the, the damage to the property occurred, the, Mr. Beachner contacted the town in order to obtain a building permit, um, to reconstruct and rehabilitate the original residence on the property. Um, due to some, some difficult circumstances, including the, the COVID public health epidemic. No answer or the correct answer was not given by the town, no building permit was issued. Um, there was an initial response to Mr. Beachner, uh, from, from the town code inspector, who, who I believe is no longer with the town. That the structure that, the original residence on the property, which, which was, uh, had been destroyed, was, um, an accessory building on the property. That there was no building permit on file, um, therefore there was no proof that it had been built legally. And, and, and as such, uh, his letter doesn't state this, but, but as such, it would not have been a legal pre-existing non-conforming use if it hadn't. If it was this accessory structure, which is not allowed in, in the zoning district and, and didn't have a building permit. That, that statement was incorrect because this particular structure was actually the original home, um, on the property. And it was built in nineteen twenty-eight, it pre-exists all of the zoning code. So it was always a legal pre-existing non-conforming building. It was a legal pre-existing non-conforming use that under the code and under New York state law, in fact, under the United States constitution, was allowed to continue to be used, uh, as, as a residence. Um, as a result of the, of the mistake, I don't think of understandable mistake by the town. Uh, Mr. Beachner was not able to obtain a building permit to reconstruct and rehabilitate that residence within six months. So, as a result of, of the failure by the town to provide a building permit, that six month deadline to re-establish or, or continue the use was not met. We're requesting that the board grant permission, um, essentially to, to extend that six month period to tonight. Uh, or until, until such a time as Mr. Beachner is able to obtain a building permit, um, to, to continue the work. Um, based on the circumstances of, of the fire, the circumstances of this property that's been used as both a farm and for multiple residences since, since at least nineteen forty. And going, this particular residence going back to nineteen twenty-eight. There are no negative impacts of, of granting our requested relief or allowing the owner to re-establish this use. There are no negative impacts, um, on this particular property. There are no negative impacts, um, on the rest of the neighborhood. And if you look through the area variance standards, which again, I, I want to point out, we're not requesting an area variance. Um, we don't believe that we need one in order to re-establish this use. But the area variance standards may be helpful in, in considering whether or not this is an appropriate, um, application to grant. You look at the essential character of the neighborhood. Uh, whether, whether an undesirable change in the neighborhood will occur as a result of the, of the requested relief. And, and here, that's absolutely not the case because this particular residence is part of the existing character of the, of the neighborhood. In fact, the residence still stands today. We've submitted some, some photographs of, of the, of the structure, both before and after the fire. As you can see, the structure is still there. It's, it's clearly part of, of the, uh, existing character of the neighborhood. It may have been one of the first structures that was ever built in this area. So, so, uh, allowing it to continue couldn't possibly change the character of the neighborhood. Um, the second, the second factor you would look at in an area variance is whether there's any other remedy. Well, here, we do have another remedy. Um, aside from that, there, there is no other remedy, other than, other than an approval, um, from this board allowing, allowing the applicant to, um, to re-establish the use. Uh, significance, whether we're requesting a, a significant, uh, relief from the board. There, there is, it is not significant relief. We're simply asking that an existing structure that has been used since nineteen twenty-eight be allowed to continue. And really, all we're asking is for a, for an extension of that six month period, which is well justified due to the, due to a mistake that was, was made by the town. As a result, uh, likely of, of the COVID nineteen public, public health, uh, epidemic. Um, physical and environmental conditions, whether, uh, the proposed relief will have any negative impacts on the environmental or physical conditions in the neighborhood. It absolutely will not. Now, all we're seeking to do is to rehabilitate and reconstruct what's already there. So these are the existing physical and environmental conditions on the, on the site. The two homes, uh, one that was built in nineteen twenty-eight, that is the physical condition. There will be no change in that or no change in the environmental conditions either. And the final one is self-created. I, I don't think that one needs a whole lot of explanation. Um, it, the, the fire that occurred on the property was, was a, um, a tragic accident. It was not the fault of, of Mr. Beachner. It, um, these things happen. Um, luckily, there was no, there was no loss of life or, or other injury, just, just to property. But it was not the fault of, of the property owner. We haven't created this condition in any way. And, um, so, you know, I've been going on for quite some time here. I'm happy to continue going on if you'd like. But, um, other than that, I, I would be happy to answer any questions that any members of the board may have.
I guess my other question, your interpretation of this.
Yeah. In comes, I wish, I wish you would have reached out in advance of the hearing. Uh, which would have been very, very helpful. So, there was a, there was an application ultimately that, that was, that was denied because of a failure to have the, the approval of these, I guess it was, uh, accessory apartment that they, that the town wanted?
I don't know that there was a formal application, but as we documented, and I believe that the two letters that we submitted were, were submitted this afternoon. I accidentally failed to include them in our original application. Um, Mr. Beachner reached out to the, to the town building department, um, explained the situation. Requested permission to rehabilitate and, and undertake the project to, to rehabilitate the residence and, and continue the use.
So the, so the fire is in November of twenty?
Yeah.
Communication with the town is February of twenty-one.
Correct.
And then based upon the communication from the town. And then based upon the communication from the town, at that point, your client was under the belief that he couldn't go forward because of what was stated in that letter?
Try to clarify. So in my, in my initial letter to, or sorry, in my initial reach out to Rod, I had, you know, told him, I said, I'd like to come in and meet with you, meet with the building department and get this underway, you know, for whatever permits we're going to need. And he, he sent a letter, I got a letter back two, three weeks later that stated that there was no record of a, an accessory apartment on that property and, with the town. And we have to, the letter's in there, we have to go through the, I think he said the planning room. And I, so I looked at it all over and I said to myself, I said, no, he doesn't realize this is the original residence here. And I sent, oh, I checked, I called, I called him on the phone and I told him that. He said, I, I goes, I didn't know that. And he says, well, he says, get together whatever you can and send it all into me. And I just, and he says, I can't guarantee it'll change anything, but he says, I'll definitely take a look at it. He goes, it could make a difference. And I sent him a packet with, I think you have everything that I sent him. There's even some past tax records in there and things, but I never heard back from him. So about three more weeks had passed and I called in there and then I found out he retired. So then I was told to call back a couple, two, three weeks later because there was a lot on the guy's table as far as, you know, things that were left on, on the, on the desk. So I, from there, I don't want to go any further with it, but that's, that's the initial conversation with Rod.
And so I just want to be clear here. So in addition to the structure that was damaged by the fire, there's another residence on, on the, on the progress?
I just wanted to. The, the accessory apartment is a, I think I heard you said it's a, that's a use variance, not an area variance?
Correct. No, accessory apartments are actually permitted with planning or approval. However, the applicant is stating that the town incorrectly thought it was an accessory apartment. That's, that was what the initial impression from our building department was. So we researched town records and obviously didn't find any record of the accessory apartment. What we've later come to find out is what we thought was the accessory apartment was actually the original residence. So a second home was built subsequent to years after this one that we're speaking about.
Correct.
So there was a lot of confusion on, on the town's end, but after receiving this additional information and explanation, it appears to make sense now. And unfortunately, six months has obviously elapsed. I'll also state that this was a time period where we were in a little bit of organizational flux. There is a provision in the code that allows the commissioner of public works to issue a permit to rebuild after it's destroyed by fire. However, that title was vacant during this time and, and I didn't feel comfortable making that determination. So I felt it was best to send it for this board under the provision of two twenty-five dash one hundred.
I just want to clarify once again, because we've dealt with accessory apartments in the past. Where do we categorize them as an area variance?
I don't even think it's an area variance.
I'm saying, if I haven't, if I don't construct an accessory apartment, what am I going to seek? An area or a use variance?
You're not going to the zoning board?
We all do. We've dealt with.
Only because they've been impacted separately.
Right. If there's a dimension or a litigation.
Yeah. We have had a similar situation, a building on Ridge Kind by gravel that also got caught in the COVID delay where the gentleman was trying to reconstruct the house with the storage building behind it. There was a wild lapse, something needed to be reconstructed. The world shut down for COVID, so his six month period lapsed. And then he had to come before this board to get permission to extend the six month period to be able to rebuild the building. The house was pink, I can't tell you the address. Used to be where the birds were.
What was the second structure, what was now the second structure?
So according to the winter county tax records, the original structure was built in twenty-eight and the second. And this is the structure we're dealing with right now?
Correct.
Right, okay. But I think that's where the confusion came, the Sheldon indicated apartment. And Mr. Powder thought that there was apartment within one of the two existing homes. That could have been the case when in fact it was a separate.
Well, I mean, it has two addresses, one for one structure, house, one for the other structure, house.
I mean, I can tell you in the thirty-five years I've lived there, there's always been a residence there.
I, I know that.
I, I assumed it was an accessory structure just because I knew Mr. Lazar's house has been the neighbors, but, but it's always been a residence, it's always been.
I, I agree. I mean, it's obviously it was built for, it was nineteen forty-five, that's before any ordinance was established. It's pre-existing non-conforming.
Well, in firms, we're always allowed to give multiple dwellings as well. I think that's a part of the agriculture section that, that firms can give more than one residence without it.
It's changed through the years, but you're, you're correct. The accessory, a new cash accessory structure requires a certain amount of area. And I think, I don't have the, can you look that up Josh, please? Have you had that in the, in the lettuce card case?
But to answer your original question, the secondary house was built in nineteen thirty-eight, so ten, ten years later.
In fact, there were, there were five houses on, on the single parcel at one time.
Which lived on Clem Road.
Yeah, and then those have been subsequently subdivided off, but when, when the property was developed, this distinction between primary accessory structure, accessory apartment didn't exist. I think the, the proper way to think about this is not as an accessory apartment, but in fact, it's just as a legal pre-existing non-conforming use, multiple family on, on one, on one parcel.
Yeah, because I've been told even the last ten years, nine eighteen and nine twenty, we're also still part of that same person, we're all, all part of the firm until we sell that.
So to your other question, Dom, the accessory apartment is limited to thirty-five percent of the gross floor area of the dwelling unit or seven hundred and fifty square feet, whichever is less. And that's if it's detached. I'm sorry, five hundred square feet max if it's detached, but again, I.
I don't think it fits this category all right. And having personal knowledge, if both structures were used as living, as separate homes, yes, they were on one property.
Which was allowed at that time?
Back in the twenties and thirties, before the law would prohibit it. So it had been two single family colonies on one parcel and that. Don't have the data, I don't have my own data to her. I, you know, it's pre-existing non-conforming structure or use, whatever way you want to call it.
So what, what transpired then, kind of logically between February of, what is what now, about eighteen months? In terms of interactions with the town?
Just different calls and messages.
And then you retained counsel?
What? Retained coun, what, I'm sorry, what's your question about retaining counsel? When?
Correct.
A few months ago.
Three, four months ago?
Yeah, maybe three, four months. And that was just, I was just making sure that I, I understand you and everything. Now, I don't think most citizens realize this. Did you realize that the use would expire if not improved within six months? That's, that's, that's something that only that someone that knows the code would know that.
I, I, I did because I have family. That's cool.
You know, I think it's worth noting as well that, that Mr. Beachner made it clear that his intention was to continue the use of the property for multifamily. And so in a sense, you can't say that it was intentionally abandoned. It's not like he just gave up on the matter. He, he provided written notice to the town that he was seeking to continue or re-establish the use. Within six months, that request essentially was denied. And so he, he lost that status or the, the six months expired through no fault of, through no fault of the town.
I think, you know, I think the question then becomes, how much, what's a reasonable amount of time after you've been denied? It sounds like it's somewhere around thirteen, fourteen months, maybe, if you're taking so, call it a year. Is that? Is there, you know, some type of a equitable situation that arises, whether it be latches or whatever the circumstances might be? But I think, you know, from the, from the town's perspective, even if it's a little on the long side before the applicant kind of came to his senses and said, you know, maybe this isn't right, let me seek advice at counsel, I don't know what prejudice really has come to the town over that period of time. I mean, how is the town really situated any differently had the applicant immediately pursued counsel as opposed to waiting twelve months? Particularly when he was affirmatively denied. If, if the town would say some of the effect of, you know, we're not sure, let us get back to you, and the applicant dragged his feet, but more or less, he, he was told affirmatively that it, it wasn't, it wasn't allowable, so he would not.
Could I speak, could I speak to that? Sure. Okay. There, beyond that initial letter after three months with Rod's initial denial, the, the next conversation with, with Rod was not a definite denial. It was, I did not know that. I did not know that that was the original residence. He said, get me whatever you can together and get it into me. I did that at his request. Then I didn't hear back from him. So three weeks later, I got a call, or I called him, and I found out he retired. There was a lot of back and forth right up to, okay?
And I can attest to that as well. I think Greg and I have had several conversations over the phone in that time.
I, I, I mean, and I respected Josh's uncertainties as to what we could do there, you know, moving forward. And I don't know any of the details of it, but you know, it seemed like there was a lot of uncertainty and, you know, nobody wanted to make a decision basically, which is understandable. I was patient, I was being patient. That's, that's really what it comes down to. And then I, you know, I sought counsel to make sure that, you know, we, we came into this with a good understanding of what we needed to present.
Like it would be my, my opinion based upon everything the board has now on the record, I, I don't think there was any waiver here by the applicant. You, you combined COVID with the lack of the commissioner, a long determination made and reconsideration and some indecisiveness by our own staff, certainly not, no disrespect to, to Judge. And then, and then the applicant reset for counsel. So.
Just my, my experience with how we lost the deputy superintendent of public works, superintendent of public works, building inspector, other people retired in the town, I went to five, five key people that worked at home that all retired in the year of COVID.
Yeah.
And, and they were doing their best, but everybody was under internment. So I could see where the applicant wasn't getting exact answers to those questions.
And this, this is, you know, this is inherently a well-off the beaten path circumstance.
Yeah.
This is something that you're going to know off the top of your head.
And in the other days, the things have been, these structures have been there for eighty to ninety years with no detriment to the town. Matter of fact, I, I find out a couple of times a day every day, never, I mean, it's benefitted, it's benefitted the town. So I, I, you know, from my perspective, what's the detriment to the town? I, I see there's a huge benefit to the applicant, but no detriment to the town, to allow it to, that's my, my opinion.
So I just want to know, how, how is this board acting on this? Determination?
We need to determine if we can extend the six month video.
Based on two twenty-five one hundred? That's the request and that's your guidance, correct, Joe?
Yes.
And that is your guidance as well?
Yes.
All right, let's open this up to the, this meeting is open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this application? Do you plan to speak for or against the application? No? Okay. We'll close that piece of the meeting out in terms of, of seeker. So on this that? I'd say it's on this that?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we've got this public comment seeker. Now, I think we just need to know how, you know, the, the request is a determination that this board could grant an extension to the six months of the circumstances of what has occurred at the property and consistent with the, with two twenty-five thousand one hundred. Is that what we're saying?
It was, it was involuntary because the time, time you got the board, they banned, they banned it. I don't care. But for the actions of the town, he wouldn't have given up that right to continue the prejudice in that performance.
Okay. I guess the question is, are we all in favor of this determination?
Should we?
Protecting the extension?
How do we?
We got to.
Somebody submitted an application with respect to that interpretation. Obviously it needs to be seconded. I would think that since this board is making that determination, that we should indicate in the application that there's a start date and then it would run six months from now.
And this start date is start of construction or start of the process, which is kind of pretty, and.
Well, what's your intentions if, now this is a favorable determination for you, what are your intentions? Are you planning to go to town hall in the next few days to get a building permit?
Absolutely.
Okay. And for clarification on that, this six months, is that to commence construction? I was trying to.
Should, should we say viable construction? Typical.
So just so we're all clear, what two twenty-five one hundred is?
Two twenty-five doesn't really talk about this.
I don't think it talks about that.
No, it doesn't. Now, two twenty-five dash nine eight. Non-conforming building, your structure damaged or destroyed by fire, and you are prepared to rebuild within a period of six months. For good cause, the commissioner of public works may allow a maximum of two successive additional periods not exceeding three months each to rebuild upon the same location, upon the same foundation and up to the same height and square foot that existed prior to the damage or destruction.
So finally, we would be making a determination or granting. So if anything, we would be making a determination or granting an extension to that provision?
To that provision.
And that's 225-98D?
98D.
Eight?
Do you hear those conditions? You have to build on the same foundations, same size, same place, same area?
Yes.
Which is exactly what you're doing for the plans you gave up. Now, I guess my question, maybe it's not appropriate, but does this have to go to the planning board or, like, I gotta believe somebody has to approve the structure that's going to go into there to make it apply with?
Probably architectural.
Yeah, the building department.
Okay, so they still, okay.
Yeah. It's probably, once the start of the property, around June.
Okay. But I would think once the permit is going to apply before it's granted, then.
So there should be substantial work done in the first six months and then the applicant will look for the extension, which Jasmine should give an administrative there as well.
We technically don't have that title yet.
Yes. Once it's made, it's good for one year, if you would expect.
So once the permit is granted, I don't know that the board needs any kind of determinations because you started a process for the construction.
As of today, why don't we just set a date as of today? Six months of these long-term extension requires a waiting, and that gives us the time we probably need. So the request is the provisions of 225-98, was it?
Didn't seem like they would.
And that's the worst determination. Okay.
I guess I could call something else and throw it on it. But I would make a motion based on the information and testimony that we heard tonight and the position that we understood from Mr. Otuzo about the transitioning of many of the town employees, that there was a lapse based on the original occurrence of November of 2020. And when you wanted to start reconstruction, some things fell through the cracks. And this board would make a determination that on a go-forward basis, effective July 26, 2022, that the provisions of 225-98D are, would commence starting this year.
So?
Makes sense?
That makes sense. Mr. Mutov?
Aye.
Mrs. Volo?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Hause?
Aye.
Mr. Stafford?
He dropped, he touched on it, he dropped the connection.
Okay. I think in terms of, you know, next steps, it's obviously you'll file for your building permit and then the time coming online and 225-98D makes that all viable.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll be out.
I think we've got to approve.
Do you have minutes to approve? If there are no corrections, I would make a motion to approve in minutes of the June 14 meeting. All is in paper?
Aye. Okay, that concludes this evening's meeting and the administrative approval of the meeting. Thanks. Good night.
We'll be heading out. I don't really have enough to say. I still want to, you die, and so you all have this meeting.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes. Great. I hope this week's question is for the next week. I hope somebody in your office.